We want to welcome you to our city commission, study session, and special meeting, uh, meeting. Uh, we asked that you turn off the silent cell phones. Uh, meetings are televised every day on channel two at seven P. M. And at midnight, and you can also view it on YouTube. We have two items on the agenda. Uh, first item is the city festival management update.
All right. Thank you for having me.
Let me introduce you real quick before we get started. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, uh, tonight, we are beyond excited to, uh, have the first full comprehensive update of the Camp Leavenworth Festival. A lot has been going on behind the scenes. Um, we hear about it a lot. We get a lot of questions from the public. When are we going to know more? Uh, the first year, the first year, the first year is what I keep saying. Um, we're, it's changing all the time, uh, back and forth, what it's going to be like, uh, the music. And so, uh, staff had a really good meeting with the team from O'Neal last week. Um, I don't think a lot, everything is solidified, but a lot of stuff is coming into clear, uh, focus. So, uh, we are lucky enough to have, um, Kelly come up tonight, um, and go through where we are and what's going on, and maybe take some questions from you. Not everything's set in stone yet, so, but we'll talk as, in as much specifics as we can. So I'll turn it over, uh, to Kelly O'Neal Wenzel, the President and CEO of O'Neal Events and Marketing.
Well, thank you guys. Um, well, I can't tell you, um, out of all the events that we work out throughout the year, this is one of the events that the staff is like giddy about. They're just having a blast with it. And, um, like Paul mentioned, we, a lot has come together. And it really takes, you know, does this work? Does this work? Who's involved and what all of that is? So I'm happy, I'm excited to kind of give you guys kind of the update, and then you're going to see it quickly happen this week on all of our stuff. A lot of people are saying, what is it? What is it? And we're like, well, it's an, it's a festival and it's going to have this and this. Now we're going to have some more specifics. So that's what I'm going to share with you tonight, tell you kind of what's kind of in stone, semi-stone, and then what we really think is going to happen and we hope to happen a lot, just, you know, we have to kind of play with. We have a lot of ideas and the fun part about that is we can push some of those ideas to next phase of this if they don't happen and grow into it. So I'm going to start with the entertainment. So our entertainment is probably what we're most excited about. We, um, we do feel very confident that everything is solidified. And I have, um, for you kind of a bio that I can just pass around. I didn't want to go page after page after page. But basically, we're going to have our two, what we'll call headliners are Haha Tonka, which is out of the Ozarks. They're a huge regional draw. Um, we went with the kind of music that is a lot of variety of music. Everything from R and B to, um, bluegrass to, um, um, a little bit of diversity in every kind of aspect, so that we appeal to all people. So you're not going to come here and feel like, I don't like country and everything they have on the stage is country. Um, but, and I'll just, I'm just going to kind of brief over so you show the depth of the variety that we have. So Haha Tonka, again, that is a, what I would say your biggest next to big time grain company. We've worked with both bands before. They're really easygoing bands and they appeal to a lot of, um, ages. So Haha Tonka, um, much more of, um, they call it indie rock. So that's the genre there, but right out of the Ozarks. Um, and they, um, uh, kind of do a little bit of college rock. They kind of just played all over. Big Time Grain Company, on the other hand, is a little bit more country. Um, they call themselves Country Country Rock. Um, so they are Western Kansas. And a lot of these you'll see, um, we really played to a lot of Kansas, a lot of Lawrence, and also some Kansas City. So we, we did kind of regionally base a lot of these, so we can kind of draw from there. So I'm just going to mention a few, like Maria the Mexican. Um, these, we've seen them. They're beautiful. They're fun. They're a blues funk soul fusion. Um, and, um, they get a lot of like, kind of, um, smaller radio play. So they're, they're a lot of fun. Um, I'm just going to kind of walk through a few. We have a father-daughter folk duo, Bob and, um, Yuna Walkenhorst. Um, they're kind of, uh, they're out of KCMO. Let's see, another one that I think is good to Sarah Morgan. You probably maybe have heard, got some radio play as well. Um, this is a singer-songwriter. Um, to pull in, uh, a little bit of, I like this one. RB Soul and Pop is Dumar, out of Kansas City, Missouri. We have a soul funk blues rock band, Heather Newman Band. Um, and let's see, American Roots and Blues Grand Marquee. And you guys, Grand Marquee's a pretty big name in Kansas City. I think they come out of that. They kind of blend all over, um, and have a lot of big, um, kind of big band music. So we feel like we've kind of just really, really balanced it out. And so how we're going to do it is we're going to have two stages. One stage, um, we're calling, we haven't, well, we, we're hoping we get a sponsor. Let's put it there. So if you're interested in sponsoring, please let us know, but we'll name it with that sponsor's name. Right now, we'll call it the camp main stage. And then we're going to have what we'll call the airstream stage. And the airstream stage is going to be, um, a smaller stage. Um, it looks like this, which is very cute and fun. And we'll probably put a, um, kind of figuring out how to fence around it, do string lights that would go over it. So it's a more open air stage. Um, and this one is going to have these folks that you see up here, Sarah Morgan, Sky. They're going to be on Saturday during the day. But what we'd like to do with this stage at night is pull in what we call a silent disco. And a lot of people wonder what this is, but it's becoming such a trend and so much fun for all ages. Um, we have seen babies with these things on with their parents playing. But essentially what a silent disco is, is there's a DJ that performs and you get a set of, um, headphones when you check in. And you grab these headphones, you put them on, and essentially, I think there's two tracks. So one track is playing one thing and another track is playing another. And people, it's, I tell you, it's the biggest spectacle to watch a silent disco, because you have to guess what they're singing and they're all off key and it's really fun, but the people inside are having a blast. Um, we used this at an event recently, Bolivaria in Kansas City. It's our second year. We had to double the number of headphones and there was a line for two and a half blocks waiting to get into it. Um, we've seen these pop-ups now. We've seen people paying forty-five dollars a night to go into a silent disco. So we felt like we looked around Leavenworth and we haven't seen a silent disco. And it's amazing the ages, because, um, the DJs know who, who they're playing to. They can look at the crowd and quickly know what they're gravitating to and they can change the song. So if there's older people with their kids, they know, oh, I'm going to try this song and everybody kind of sings along. They're a lot of fun and we feel like it's an activity that could kind of really have a lot of fun at night. And so we could focus the main stage with main music and then the silent disco can be happening and you don't have to worry about any sound bleed or anything like that. And we feel like there's kind of constant activity happening on a stage without having it dead for a minute and open for a minute. Because we're trying to keep the energy in and so the energy and the space is going to be still kind of quaint and we don't want to spread it out too much just because of sound and this will allow us to do so. So we're really excited about that. This is committed. All of our vans have been sent contracts, so we're just, and they all told us they were available. So now it's just a matter of if anybody doesn't flake out on us. But so far, we're looking very good on all of that. So we'll have a full lineup listing and we'll be, um, sharing that on social media this week, um, with the list and time and the stage schedule.
The silent disco, does that take place at the second smaller stage?
So it will take place. So if you guys saw that cute, um, airstream, the airstream has a little stage. So during the day, it'll have states, uh, on the, at night, it'll have, we'll have a DJ setup on that. And then, like I said, we were thinking kind of a string light open as opposed to putting a tent over. We can always change that plan if weather looks a little different and that's the beauty of it. Um, each night, we're excited to say that we have secured two nights of fireworks. They will be ten-minute shows and they will be the feature after Haha Tonka and Big Time Grain Company. Um, they will be set off across the river on the land across the way. We've gotten permission. We're working with Walld Fire Company, who's out of, uh, Grand, uh, somewhere in and around Missouri. Um, they are excited and ten-minute show, we felt like was a good enough to work within our budget. Um, it's, it's a nice show and they do a good job. So the other things-
Does Bolivaria have fireworks?
We do not have fireworks at Bolivaria.
It takes, takes place, right?
Uh, yeah, and you know, I think what's fun about this one is we know people in the city love fireworks. This is an easy thing to draw everyone. So if you're not into the music, or you might think you're not into something else, this is something you could just come down for this. And so I really like that we're adding this in. We could have just done one night. We're going to see how it goes, but we think this is a good way to celebrate your first year festival. Um, you know, music, if we find music becoming the, the showstopper, people are really enjoying the music, I would quickly say you maybe just do one night, or it acts as a goodbye moment and you don't have to do as much on the fireworks. It just depends on what people gravitate to the first year. So other things that you're going to find is we have this darling camper booth. Um, that's a photo booth where people could go in and, um, take photos. That's the very thing to do, Instagrammable moments. They get their thing. Um, I believe this would be a free thing. We're still working out details if it's going to be this actual booth. Um, we, um, just found out that she may only be able to do Saturdays, so we have another one in line that might not quite be a camper. But we, we tried to focus everything in this camper kind of theme. Um, so we are a little bit more selective in who we do. And I think when you do a festival, it's important to remember that. You want to keep that theme of, um, you know, the, the whole fort and the whole kind of who you are. And we feel like if we kind of keep that theme, people will walk in and just feel it. And it's outdoor activity and all of that. So the other thing we've secured, and these aren't, these are kind of funky on this computer, but it says zip line. Um, we have secured a zip line. And so it'll be during, not the entire festival, we've shortened the hours to kind of focus on, um, what we'll do. And this will be a paid activity. So if you want to do a zip line, you'd have to pay. We haven't confirmed all the pricing just yet, but we feel like, again, going with the whole outdoors theme and getting active. Zip lines always are exciting. This is for your older. I think it's seventy pounds or more that can do this. Um, so you'd be amazed how many adults will be on that thing, I'm sure. I think it goes all the way up to two-eighties, so most people can ride it.
I made the cut.
Are they, are they cert, is that particularly the zip line, are they certified from a safety standpoint?
They are, and they'll provide a COI for the city, which is what it is, and everybody, um, will have that. So another one is Blade and Timber. This is an axe throwing. Um, I don't know if anybody's known the whole fad of these axe throwing places. Um, I believe that one is opening in Lawrence, maybe. I don't think you guys have one here.
No.
Um, but there was a lot of appeal from Blade and Timber to come and because they know that it is that. We've had this at a, at an event once. They have a portable setup. So if you guys kind of see, they bring this whole setup. They set up its cages. It's very safe, same thing. They'll have cer, a certificate of insurance. Um, this is another paid activity, um, where you can pay to throw so many. And they go through the whole safety mechanisms with you on how to do it, just like you would if you walked in the, the experience. And then you get to do the, the axe throwing. And then they usually do an, um, on like day of competition. So if you make it to so much, you get to come back and be a part of that. Um, so it's a really fun, again, this whole idea of camp, and we thought that would be fun.
Is there an age limit for that, for the axe, axe throwing?
Um, I do believe it might be ten.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sure there is.
I think it is ten. Yeah.
Both of these will be staffed by, by these companies.
I know. I actually had to think about that because my son was able to do it. And I was like, I don't know if I want him throwing axes, but we'll see. Um, they love it and it's, it is a lot of fun. I've done it before and I almost got a bullseye and it's thrilling and it makes you want to do it again.
Okay.
Yes, and as he said, these will be staffed by their companies. These won't be volunteers. They'll be doing that. Okay, so the other thing that we thought would be a lot of fun is to do a smores making area. And so whether it's down by the river, it depends on how we can kind of, um, make it work. And that's part of what I'm here to look at tonight, is we'll, you know, in a perfect world, we'll come up with our own, make your own, uh, smores things. So there'll be grills. You'll have, um, a smore station where you kind of go in, you pay, you'll have to pay. Nobody gets free food, but it's very minimal. You go get your smores making kit, what's, get you your skewer and get you your one or two smores making things. And people will have volunteers helping pass those things out and then they can go do it. This will be a limited time, obviously, in the evenings, maybe for about an hour out by the river and people can come in and do their smores making. Another idea that has not been confirmed, but I'm hoping will, is build your own trail mix. And this might be in our kids' activity area, or, I don't even, it's not really a kids' activity. I would love to do it, where we hopefully get a sponsor that we get a different, uh, set of different trail mix makings, like in cereal bins, and you can maybe create your own label and it has the Camp Leavenworth already printed on it and they can write their own, and then they can go and build their own smores kit, again, maybe two bucks or something. It's not about the money. It's more about just so the lines don't get crazy and people don't keep coming back. Um, so then you could do your own trail mix.
Cereal ingredients.
Right. That's kind of what we have on our list, actually, and so we'll see if that comes up. We're looking at Walmart as well, like who could just supply us with the materials for free. One more thing to kind of pull it in, but I, as I see smores and I see, um, um, I'm going to pop this over. As I see smores or trail mix, that doesn't have to be a kid. That can be anybody. Um, we've talked to Top Golf. They're going to bring out this cute little golfing, um, inflatable in the left-hand corner. They're going to, um, have some of that. Again, this, I've seen more adults than kids. You're seeing a lot of kids involved in this. But these are kind of the things that we see, feel as the family. We talked to the National Guard. We're like ninety-eight percent sure that they are going to bring out a rock climbing wall and, um, this obstacle course. Um, so we're excited about that. Um, and we have an option of another obstacle course if for any reason it doesn't come through. So we'll, we'll get that.
And talking to the National Guard, you talked to the National Guard here in Leavenworth, or is it, you know, a higher?
It's the Kansas, like in this, where I think they were like, we'll do anything because they were really excited to get out of something else. So.
Okay.
Um, yes, so, and that's great and this hole pulls it in. So the other thing we're calling is the trading post. The trading post is where we're going to have vendors. Um, and we have kind of two levels. We have a lot of airstream, kind of different camper type shops that are popping up around the region that go to different festivals. And they have everything from jewelry to T-shirts to different things. So we're calling those kind of our more specialty vendors that we want in, because we want a variety of stuff that kind of goes with it. We've even seen, and we have so many ideas for future, that there's people that actually do these pop-up trading companies and they're all camper kind of themed and they buy, they sell camp supplies. Um, and then we will, in addition, we're keeping it limited, but, and it's all going to be juried. So we're not just going to like let anybody and everybody come and say, this is cash and carry. So you can, you know, this area, we really want to keep to cash and carry. You can sell something. So we will have a smaller feed place for a table only. So this isn't like a ten-by-ten setup or an airstream or anything like that. That, that would be, if you have like your local honey, somebody reached out and sells local honey, sure. If you sign it more your small individual handmade goods. So we don't want to open up the can of worms for people that do those different businesses, um, like a Mary Kay or a Sensi or anything like that, because there's so many people that do that and we're afraid that just opens it up and we'd have to pick one and then we'd have to pick ten. Um, so here is where we're really, really strictly sticking this to if you're part, part of the theme and it's jury. Like, we want this to be quality, that people feel like they came and just, just get thrown stuff. Um, the first year, this is always the harder year. We're not charging very much, but we're really wanting, and we've already sent those invitations out. So we had all of people apply and then now we have sent the invitations based on what we want. Um, and, um, those invitations are going out, I believe, this week. And so hopefully, everybody will confirm back. Um, so then we're calling the other areas, the mess hall. This is where our food here area is. Um, and we have, um, we've had an about, I think, eight or so apply. And now we're sending out the invites and already one, unfortunately Cheesy Street couldn't do it. Um, but we were first focusing on people with like camper themes that are Leavenworth-based. Um, I think there's three food trucks in Leavenworth. I think two are, two applied or one did. So, um, we're keeping that, um, at hand. Um, but we, we probably plan the first year, because there's so many restaurants neighboring and everything like that, that the first year we'll probably do maybe five to six food trucks. We feel pretty on par. We'll start reaching out to the non-camper cute ones, um, to see if we need to add to them. But I think we're going to, we're pretty well locked and loaded in those. Those will start, if you look at the website, you'll start to see things populate as things are firmed up. And then, of course, we're going to have merchandise, because I hear the number one thing that you guys are asked is, how do I get that cute T-shirt you guys launched it in? Um, so we're working with a company now to see some samples and some colors. We would love, we know that this marketing and this theme of this is going to be, it's going to be very popular. So it's very easy for, um, us personally to go, oh my God, we could do this. We could do this. We could get a canteen. We can do all these things. But this first year, we'll probably keep it to maybe a long sleeve or going into the fall, or a crew shirt, a short-sleeved T-shirt, and probably like a water bottle and patches. And we think this patch thing could really grow to become a collector's for your signature festival that people could kind of grow and add to different things. So we'll keep it simple. We're finalizing those things now and we'll have those, um, on sale. And the good news is you hope you sell out and then we know that it's popular instead of having a bunch of inventory left over.
Are you having, uh, different colors, T-shirts?
Um, we haven't decided colors or the, we let the designers, we tell them the fit and the kind we want, whether it's a different style, and then they come back with what, these were just their original mockups.
I like the man peach, but I prefer blue.
You like blue?
You gotta go with the colors.
Mary, I'll put a note.
Let them do the colors.
I will put a note, but you can see all the color schemes and, I mean, we could go, I mean, nuts on all of the different, I mean, the squirrels and the, the little, I love the little truck. I don't know if you guys seen it. Kind of looks like the little, um-
I like the squirrel. I like that one.
There's just so many cute things that we could do with this.
These are going to be huge for regional visitors.
That's what I think.
Those quirky things.
Yeah.
And people love novelty T-shirts and so I think it's going to be-
That one, that Camp Leavenworth, Discover Your Worth, I think that idea of really focusing it on you as a city and really people feeling that kitschy and kind of fun feel, and it gives you guys this really fun personality, I think. So we're excited to see where it goes. So location, um, this is what I'm going to kind of, our team is going to come back up and now start plotting what goes where. Now that we have these new activities, we have this, we have this many, you know, we have measurements and we kind of know it. We know pretty much the stage is going to go on the end there, we think. Um, we're still working on the-
That's the primary stage, the big stage.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Okay.
And so right now, you know, maybe we'll go down the street, um, to do the second stage. We have a zip line we have to put in. So these are all things we're kind of working on. What we do know is we will have this quarantined off, meaning we'll fence it as, um, off. And the beauty of it is you can see we have buildings, so it's kind of be less fenced, because we've kind of got natural boundaries, um, which is great. And so we're looking at probably two entrances. One sort of on that north side. Um, I'm terrible. I'm still learning streets here, but next to that, um, north side parking lot would probably have one there, like you're entering here. And probably one on the south side. Um, and it'll have like maybe trading posts and maybe, um, in a perfect world, we're going to try to talk if anybody knows, anybody at Fort Riley or anything that actually has a tank or, um, a cute couple trucks that we could put in and maybe a TP on one side and a tank on another, and we kind of play with the whole camper. So anything you can get, we've already talked to the fort here, obviously. They're like, we're a school. We don't have a lot of that.
National Guard.
National Guard. They bring them to the prays all the time.
Thirty-fifth Infantry.
If I could get that information before I leave, I would love it.
I can get it too. I didn't think of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if we had a few of those, that we would use as decor elements. So as you lead in into the front, we might rent, uh, you know, work with a local nursery to put some pine trees in the front. So you really feel like you're coming in. So the purpose of that is to, if we determine if we need to bag check, um, and really just to click, um, so we can see how many people are coming in and out. And obviously for liquor purposes, so people aren't coming in with food and beverage and people aren't leaving with food they can, but beverages they can't. Um, so while it's a free festival, we know we need to make it, um, a safe festival and, um-
Can I ask a little bit, who, who's in charge of the security? Is that going to be the city or is that going to be Kelly? And I mean, I, just in terms of differentiating the responsibilities.
Um, the police department.
Okay, good.
They'll be uniformed. We're not hiring security guards. We are hiring, the festival itself, the city is hiring its own police, uh, patrol. So we will have it fully staffed by uniformed police officers every minute that the festival's open.
Okay.
So the only piece on there that we just need to figure out is, um, if we do do bag checking or something like that, there are some kind of smaller security companies that do provide that service. Um, and obviously, it's a, it's a concern of everybody. It's number one topic. I'm on a national, in fact, I'm a president of, of the International Festivals and Events Association. We are constantly talking even since the Garlic Festival. And obviously, as you know, in Kansas City, this last weekend, we had somebody at the very popular, two blocks from my office, um, uh, Arts Festival First Fridays that got shot by a stray bullet. Um, it's happening and with everything that happened this weekend, we have every one of our boards asking us, how are we going to be even safer? Um, and so I do believe that probably bag checking for the first thing is very key. Um, we are looking into, um, for, we have a festival coming up in three weeks. We're even looking at what does it look like to wand and/or metal detectors. Unfortunately, that's where we're at.
Yeah.
Um, it's very expensive and so right now, we're going to give you guys some options and then you guys can choose with yours. But we believe that it is, you know, safety is my number one thing. We want people to come and enjoy it and not, and feel safe. And then one of our things that we tell the public all the time is also up to you, to, to be the eyes and ears and understand where you're at and where you're able to go, because unfortunately, we can't predict the world. And so people need to be more on alert. Um, and let me think. Okay, so that's that. I'm going to just mention a few other things I might not have. Um, so we also are going to have like a kids' activity area, craft tent. We're working on who's going to run it. Um, we have a company that we've worked with multiple times and they do things like, we've suggested everything from parachute, um, ma, um, bracelets, making those to, um, you know, labels, or do they run the different craft that we have. And so right now, we have one company coming back to us on what they would do with the supplies that they have. They're all about education and creativity. And so we feel like that's a fun little activity to have and we'll have that. Um, one thing that I, um, kind of giggled about, but my husband is now down at the, um, area. He is in a recreational tree climbing, um, club. And I know that sounds odd, but they actually, it's much like rock climbing, but up a tree. So they preserve the tree, um, but they shoot these things up and they harness up the kids and they put the helmets on and they, they could go up in the tree and kind of climb it. So he's currently researching trees. I get dinner out of it. Um, this would be something. This would be something that, um, would be very unique. They're, they've looked and they have an insurance thing. Um, in fact, they spent the weekend in West Lawrence, um, looking at, uh, they were doing a film. So there was a short film being filmed there and they had to help the guy in a parachute in a tree. But they are, this would be very unique to Leavenworth. This is something that is going to be very popular, we think. Um, and, uh, to do it at this event only makes sense. So if it works, it's great. We would probably do an RSVP and, uh, pay ahead of time and then pay on site. So you'd have to pay for something like this, or we're going to have a line forever trying to get up a tree. So we're looking at that. Um, camping options, um, we have a person that does have nineteen of those yurts, as they call them. They brought them out to, um, Flint Hills one year to try to do the glamping idea where people could rent that space. They just set them up. You put a blanket down and people rent the space. Um, so this is new. You haven't heard this. Um, we don't know if we can get this done this year, but what we would need is some grass area and could we even create it on the river here? So it's a temporary only, you know, ten or reserve for the first year for a small fee, just so it plays into this whole camp idea. Um, obviously, the camp site, that's a mile away or so, is not usable right now. We hope maybe we could figure out if we could use that. But, um, we do want to get into this and we're, we're still, we don't know, again, if this could happen this year, but if we could get eight to ten, um, airstreams where people would bring them out, park them in the street. They get to stay overnight, but then the, the idea is they open up and show them to people during the day. So it's like a car show, but an airstream show. Um, these are all things we're working on and just trying to find the right contacts. And we've got some lines going, but it's all timing. So whether that is a pie in the sky idea for this year, it could happen. We have face painting happening by the First United Methodist Church. They just wanted to come out and do something. Um, and so they are going to play with these themes of these cute little characters that we have and they're going to work on that and offer complimentary face painting. Um, Stroller Moms, which is a group, and you guys may be aware of at the fort. Um, they are super excited and we had talked about yoga, like in the morning, that people could come out and do yoga and then come to the festival. Um, they are really big, which I'm totally loving this, but they use their strollers and they do all these bootcamps. And we tried to explain to them that people probably don't want to come to a festival and work out. So if you would like to do a show or do an activity, that could be kind of fun to show what you do. So they're coming back and they're really excited and they're going to, um, come up with something. Um, and let's see, we're working to have probably two bars, maybe one. And we're working, um, with the city right now to come up with who the, um, folks that will run it, um, for us. And then we'll manage all beverage sales. So that will be a source of income for, to kind of help offset some of the other costs. And I think that is it. So in a nutshell, you have a quick little overview, but you can see axe throwing, zip lines, um, kids' activities, smores, um, shopping, eating, and entertainment in a silent disco. And we call it like you have silent camp hours. That's what the silent disco is going to play off of. So we'll start just theming these and, um, do all that. And I think it's going to be very unique. I think you're going to get a lot. Um, if we can start helping, get people to help us promote it. I was driving in and I think we're going to have yard signs. We're going to have some of those things that are going to be coming quickly. coming quickly, um, what we need from everyone is, um, help us promote it, share what we have on, uh, the social media platforms, that's the number one use of tool that we do for all events and festivals, um, find people that you know that would help you, um, put flyers up, we're gonna have posters that you can put up, um, and, you know, we'll go to the kinda grassroots idea of what we can do to get this, so people really know what's going on. And I think, Paul, you said it best, everybody says, well, tell me more about the festival, what is it, what is it, and you just need to say, it is a wonderful event, that'll be great for everyone that you know, and there is going to be music, entertainment, that now you can say, ziplining, smores, um, all sorts of activities, but just trust us that it's, I can't say tree climbing yet, I gotta make sure the tree's there.
Um, so what are the basic hours for the, for?
So, the basic hours are gonna be, I think we said five to ten o'clock on Friday, um, so the nine forty-five would be the fireworks, this is kinda roughly, and we all know that's dependent on weather and all of that, but sure, nine forty-five is when we'll go there and then we'll do the same eleven o'clock in the morning to about ten o'clock at night on Saturday.
Uh, for the advertising, have you thought about billboards on Exit Twenty and Northern South by Twenty-Nine?
Um, I think we've looked at it, I think we're looking at budgets right now and seeing what's available, but if you guys have polls, so you said Exit Twenty, not like?
Yeah, right by Weston, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Exit, yeah, interstate.
If.
Billboards.
And we, we know it's a budget thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's strategically located and we've heard some things from some of the business people downtown that that would be a, a good thing, but it's gotta be within the overall context of the business model and the budget, but.
I think budget's probably our hardest one and so, we wanna do, we really wanna see, like, what I would love to see is not just in Leavenworth, but now let's talk Weston, let's talk Lansing, let's Bonner Springs, Lawrence, and then we're gonna even work, I'm on the Visit KC Board, because I do feel like a lot of people, like you guys, number one said, like, people think I go to Applefest in the fall, like, why can't they come here? And that's what we wanna try to appeal to that millennial mindset, the people that do like the off the beaten path, that's kind of a trend now and that's why we came up with this concept, so, we want to invite others and I think the concept will, but it's gonna take that grassroots, where if you know people in those towns and maybe we give them a couple of yard signs or, you know, give them something in their business that they would hang up, because you're a neighboring city, I bet they'd do it, coffee shops.
So, before, let me, for a couple of things that, that we talked about that I, I wanna delve into just a little bit deeper for people listening, the pay versus not pay activities. So, when we get into like ziplining and we have a, a small fee, whether it's five dollars or ten dollars, the city still, or the festival still, is still paying quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
We just don't know the first year whether we're gonna get fifty people to do it, a hundred people to do, a hundred and fifty, if it's huge and it sells out, maybe in the future, the city can pay more or the city can pay less, a lot of these, there is a cost, you know, say, I'm just gonna grab a, a noble zipline, say it's ten thousand, we would budget the five dollars apiece to cover a fourth of it, the festival still is paying for a lot, so, I didn't want anybody to think that we're asking people to shoulder the axe throwing and the ziplining and all this kinda stuff, the festival is dramatically subsidizing these events.
Yeah.
The big unknown is the weather, food sales, drink sales, participation, so there's so much learning the first year, um, and so, we really want to, um, uh, bring as much as we can and the festival pay for as much as it can the first year, but there's still gonna be some of these events that, um, that there should be a little bit of cost, because they are extras.
And there are also activities that, if they are free, you'll be mad, because you'll be standing in line forever.
Yeah.
You know, so you, you kinda have to differentiate, look, you're getting in for free and, and he, like you said, we're not, I don't even anticipate us covering some of the cost, I mean, it's more just as a perception.
I have a couple of questions, um, how much to sponsor a stage, the big one, I mean, do you have a budget or?
We do, and we, I, that's, I thank you for bringing up sponsorships, because sponsorships has been what, our, to our surprise, is not coming in as high and I think it's the market, the market here isn't used to paying for a signature like we are, I mean, even in some of the smaller markets we work with, you know, you could typically get, you wanna, you wanna stage, you're ten thousand, you're fifteen thousand, we're not seeing that that is, um, we're not getting a lot of that, plus people wanna see.
So, how much are you asking for?
So, right now, we're saying for the main stage, we're holding out hope for five thousand. We think we have somebody.
Here's a thought, uh, called the Kansas City, uh, US Army Recruiting Battalion Command.
That's what we're trying to get an answer on.
And if you, and I can give the city manager the phone number, and you'd have to speak with the battalion commander, not someone picks up the phone. And, I would guess that they possibly do it, they may ask then that they also have a tent, they have a recruiter or two, they're to try to sign up.
And that is my number one, we're trying to get an answer on, because I think army is easy, easy.
Yeah, but that, the recruiting command does a lot of advertising and their, the recruiting command battalion headquarters in Kansas City covers about two hundred thousand square miles, so it's.
You can give me that direct contact, I would love it.
I'll give it to Mr. Kramer.
Yeah.
Uh, you talked about, uh, uh, some clubs that maybe, what, what were the clubs you talked about that are, might be, oh, the stroller clubs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've got a tai chi group, uh, in town, a square dance club, I think they're still active, I don't know, it used to be, maybe not, uh, and outside advertising, Platt City Newspaper is a weekly, but they write stories on Leavenworth and I know that they're probably always looking for filler.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that's great, good thoughts.
And, on your bar, just a quick question, is it beer and liquor or just beer?
I think we're gonna probably start with beer, wine and maybe like one of the new, um, alcoholic vodka drinks, you know, like.
You have to get that through ABC and Topeka?
We have a meeting, um, this week, Friday, with, um, Standard, I believe, um, that we've already reached out, we are looking at sponsorship potentially with them, um, and I also have, uh, O'Malley's and then, um, I've talked to Boulevard, but the one thing we were, found out about Standard is they also work with Lawrence and their craft brew, so we think that might be a closer in.
Yeah.
Um, and so, and they're already interested and they're peaked.
And Ms. Williamson, if they do have, let's say, wine and, uh, you know, the vodka coolers, whatever, and, and beer, do we have to give a license for cereal malt in the state?
They're already doing all that.
Okay.
They, they, yeah, they've worked on that.
Okay, disregard.
We have to say, we like Kansas, it seems to be a little bit easier than Missouri on that piece.
It is? Really? That's surprising.
I, I, I'm like, really, really, it's like this, and so, um, yeah, so we're working on that, as soon as we give her the answer of who our distributor is, we'll purchase directly from the distributor. And that is the wonderful thing about what we suggested is, if this, that's the model we wanted you to do, because that subsidizes you versus going through a catering company or something where you're not making the full amount back, um, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Terms of sponsor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Terms of sponsorships and, you know, obviously, the, the amount of money is a big factor, but we've got Leavenworth Main Street Organization within Leavenworth and also the Chamber of Commerce, and I don't mind talking to either of those directors of those organizations, I don't know if that's even a possibility, but.
It's worth a try, and that's, I think this first year, that's what it's gonna take.
Right.
Um, I think the other marketing dollars, they look at it as, hmm, let's see how it goes, you know?
Right.
Or, you know, what is, what is it for me? Um, so civic dollars are what's gonna come in, so we've lowered our levels of ask, so we, uh, right now are, you know, we talked to Home Two today and we've talked to a lot of different sponsors and everybody seems to be in the smaller ranges, so we're trying to readjust, maybe we could do a trail mix sponsor or more sponsor and spread us, instead of overarching, but we hope that people will come up and, and again, if you have ideas on sponsors, um, please send them our way and that's what we've been working with.
Yeah, our list is probably eighty, eighty to a hundred.
And I think Jenna has reached personally out to every single one of them.
Every little bit helps, but.
Yeah. And I think by next year, I think it proves itself, the hope is then you'd get that signature fat, um, you know, person that, we're trying to get a firework sponsor that would really cover it for both nights, or maybe it's gonna be one night sponsored, one night sponsored, so, we'll kind of get what we can get.
So, were those the only, uh, organizations that were involved in the festivals, the ones that you listed?
Um, those are the ones that reached out that made sense on what it is, so, a lot of people, what we are gonna ask then is, what, now that we have all these and we're working with these vendors and solidifying, we're determining what our needs are for gate entries and different places, so we're gonna have volunteer options, so our perfect place would be to go to organizations we know can stack those versus just putting it out to everyone and really say, could you handle ten of these and if you do, take care of twenty volunteers for the whole weekend, we'd let you have a booth to promote yourself and we'll have one little area that will have a field.
If you had lions, they could wear their vests and show off their.
Exactly, yeah, and that's really, you know, they're, they're simple jobs, most of them will be entry, you know, maybe helping with the smores, that kinda stuff, so, that'd be good.
What about parking?
That is a great point, we're working on the map, um, that will identify all the lots that are city lots in the city, that will just say, these are complimentary parking and once it's full.
Yeah, I mean, because, obviously, we're, want as many people as possible to come, but I mean, it does raise the, the difficulty of the, or the challenge with respect to parking and.
It's sort of the, the good and the bad of an urban festival.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You kinda take that and I would imagine there'll be a lot of streets north of the community center that there's a lot of parking on, the lots will be full, but yeah, we're gonna put a parking map on the website, um, but it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge.
Will some of the parking be that far out where we would need to have some type of trans, you know, shuttle or?
You know, this year, I think we're gonna go with the city lots first and say, once those fill, if we do better than that, congratulations to everyone here, um, and then we know we, yeah, we're gonna have to be looking at, where are some larger lots that are outside the perimeter that we can start bussing people in.
You guys keep referring to the website and since the public may be looking at this, we need to make sure we tell them what the website is and.
Yes.
That is campleavenworth.com, right?
Campleavenworth.com and it will be constantly updated, social media is the other place to follow us, um.
So, you're on Facebook?
Facebook, Instagram and Twitter.
Okay.
Facebook, Camp Leavenworth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I have to learn.
Yeah.
Um, so, yes, and so, like I said, we're launching all the, the entertainers, so you'll be able to click on the schedule and then you click on the person's name and it'll pop down and it'll have their photo and a bio about them, so you can kinda learn who you're gonna see or what you're gonna see, and then as the other details and photos get to populate, we're gonna put those up.
That's great.
Um, so it's a, it's a constant work in progress, um, but I think now it's marketing and getting people here, and I know people are excited, I already heard rumors, you know, like, oh, I heard you're closing Delaware, well, I, we're not, but, okay, you know.
Well, that's not the first rumor you're gonna hear.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of them, we're getting beat up a little bit, but, um, we're, we, we really are excited about it, I think it's gonna be.
It's the same poor ten people.
Yeah, we're, we have to get beat up, I, yeah.
Yeah, the mayor and I met with, uh, getting the new garrison commander last week and they have committed to pushing this hard.
Yay.
Every avenue on the fort they can.
That is awesome.
They're gonna, they're taking every social media we send and, and blasting that out and they've committed to really selling that.
That's rare, that's really good.
I think it's really a perfect thing for them, like as a new family coming in, this is a great event to bring and feel like you've immersed yourself into the community, so I think the timing of it and everything will be great, so it's great.
Yeah, there's a lot of, just, just arrived, so.
Yeah.
Not to beat a dead horse to death, but I, I mean, it, you can make some assumptions in terms of people, if we, on the higher levels of people attending, we, we might wanna crunch a little concept or, I'm just concerned that, you know, that, the car, the whole car thing would be, and I know we have, what, twenty-two parking lots or something like that, with, you know, and I don't know how many spaces, how many cars that takes, but I'm just saying, I could see that as a potential, particularly if the weather's good and.
You're right, and those are some tweaks we could easily try to make, um, where, if you identify and tell us what the lots are, um, there's something we could add in, which is like a courtesy shuttle that just kinda drives around just for handicap or anything like that.
Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do that, but I just don't think you discount that, particularly with what I've heard about, you know, the, the advertising and the, you know, what's going on with respect to marketing, so.
Yeah, this is the hard thing, like, I worry, like, is it gonna be so successful, it's so crowded, you know, and.
That's, that's the basis of my.
We, we just, I wish I had a crystal ball.
Well, you look at Atchison, I mean, parking is ridiculous for a military.
Oh, I know there's gonna be, it can't be, you know, but, but it's.
It is what it is.
It's gonna generate for the next year though.
Well, and it really is, and I, I have a nephew who plays football at Benedictine and he's gonna work Benedictine for me and we're gonna work at the colleges, because we do really feel like.
Yeah.
This is a great weekend that they can easily come over and Saint Mary's and.
Yeah.
I think the music draws.
I think that's what's gonna draw.
Fans of that group, Haha Talk is about the Conan Show.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're nationally, no, I mean, so, you can get a lot of people saying, where are they, follow them, uh, same with Big Time Green Company, you can look at all these groups on YouTube, they all have, um.
They have a following, like a big following, we, we did, um, I think Big Time Green Company, we did an event in Riverside, um, and they had their own following, Haha Talk, I'm happy to say, was booked for Boulevardia and it rained and they didn't get on and people were so upset, so they have not played in the region for a while, so we were glad to say, that's an exact band you want.
If it rains.
And if it rains, it, it will likely have weather.
If it rains, but they will be able, so.
So, the deal with the band is, um, you know, we're at the mercy of an outdoor stage, so, if it rains and there's, um, drizzle and the power and equipment isn't able to run, then they're not gonna go on.
They're not gonna go on.
Um, they were doing everything to try to find an alternative stage indoors to perform, so they're, they're more alternative, like they'll, they'll wanna play, but sometimes, unfortunately, if they show up and they're on the site, I always pay them, because they are here and it's not our fault that it's raining, it's not theirs either.
We've done the gym, we've done the gym before, is that an option?
The most important person for you to partner with is Gary Leesack.
Yeah.
And make sure this thing comes, comes through.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
We, I, I am usually on the phone with Noah, because usually if there's really bad weather, those guys are really busy.
Yeah, I mean, if it's bad weather, it's not practical moving indoors.
I, I will say, I've evacuated many festivals, it's not my favorite thing to do ever, but, um, we will then now go to the next step of where would we ask people to go, um, in case of weather, um, the beauty of an urban festival is that you do have a lot of places to put them.
In late September, very unlikely for tornado, but you could have a spear thunderstorm like.
Sure, I mean, the, the beauty of fall is it's beautiful and awful all at the same time, but that's why a lot of people put festivals there.
Pray for sunshine.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Great.
I did have one other question and it's just, uh, I, I think I know the answer, but the investment, the money that the city is putting towards this event, uh, is the transient guest tax?
Yes, sir, that's a good point to continue to bring up and I try to do that each time we talk about it, it is transient guest tax dollars, this festival is possible by the, made possible by the four hotels, um, that have been brought into by the city, that have brought visitors to stay in the city, um, and those hotels have performed to a level, which is good, occupancy and success of those hotels has allowed the festival to happen, and again, those festival dollars, um, can be used for tourism-related activities like the festival.
Good point.
Yep.
And not for filling puffs.
No, no operation whatsoever.
Well, thank you guys, we're excited and so, help us get the word out, so we can get people there and have, make some fun memories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
And I can leave this little batch of, um.
Thank you.
The musicians, if anybody's.
Their little bios, right?
Yep.
All right. Next item on your agenda, our entertaining motion to open the special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried five zero. We're in our special meeting. Consider Resolution B two 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 eight Thornton Street property.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, uh, part of the, uh, large-scale public project, like a road project, is always getting easements for property owners. A lot of them are temporary easements that we need to construct a project. Some are permanent easements, uh, due to utilities moving. The first step in a large-scale project, if you're not able to come to an agreement with a property owner, is, uh, passing a resolution indicating condemnation. We haven't done one of these in a lo, in a while, a large-scale project, uh, that required a lot of easements. So along with the resolution, I asked, uh, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Hooper, to talk a little bit more about easements, condemnation process, what the process is, kind of where we are with the project. Um, so it's a little bit of condemnation 101, uh, but I think it's important since we haven't done one of these in a while. So turn it over to our Public Works Director.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, you'll hear the, uh, the words condemnation or eminent domain. Uh, this is really, uh, uh, essentially the same thing. And it is, uh, the, where the power of the government, uh, really interferes with private property. Uh, and we have termed the name of the resolution before you, uh, this evening is to appropriate private property, uh, connected with the Thornton Street improvements. Uh, the, uh, private property rights in America are, uh, very strongly protected constitutionally and the law is set up to enforce that. But the law also provides that if the, if the need of the public is such that, uh, uh, we need to appropriate private property to construct a public, uh, public need, there's a process to do that. And we try to be mindful of that, to, uh, only ask for property that we actually need, uh, to not, uh, seek property, uh, to take property from others that we might need, but only for that which we do. I've tried to outline the process a little bit and some background, uh, but usually, as, uh, city managers mentioned, we need easements. Uh, in this case, for a roadway project, we're needing easements, uh, to access people's property, to create better slopes for their yards. Uh, to connect the, uh, new street to their existing driveway, extend their, uh, walkways. Uh, there are some instances where the utility companies, uh, need an easement because of the new facilities, such as storm sewers or sanitary sewers. Are in their way and they need to relocate in a different alignment. Uh, all of these things are fairly typical. Uh, it's also fairly common to see a need for easements, uh, both permanent, temporary for, uh, sewer line projects. We've done some large ones in the past where we're essentially cross-country to the middle of what are vacant fields. Uh, we obtained, uh, rights to have that sewer line there. Uh, we try to negotiate with, uh, property owners in all of these cases. Uh, in the Thornton, case of Thornton Street, uh, uh, the fact that it's a, an existing road on a fairly substantially wide existing right-of-way. Reduced the number of actual easements we needed to, I forget the actual numbers, at thirty-something.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, fifty-three total, perhaps thirty-something properties. Uh, that's, that's a fairly small number on such a large project. And we had a meeting, uh, we invited all the residents and sent information to all of the, uh, property owners. And, uh, we had the easement documents prepared for them, uh, say, these are what we need to complete this project. Uh, if you, uh, believe that this is appropriate, kindly sign here. Uh, several of them did. The, uh, we've recontacted, uh, many of them and we've received several more documents, uh, that were signed by the property owners. And the, uh, we hired, uh, a company called The Land Company, John Amryan. Uh, he, this is what his business is, is, uh, he, he, he can talk paint off, uh, off, off these desks. He can, he can talk up a storm. Uh, and he's very convenient and he will, uh, he's very talented in this. And he will meet with, uh, people that are property owners, for easements that we don't have. And through his efforts, we've acquired some more. So at this point, uh, on this particular project, I think we are down to, uh, I think the policy reports it, uh, four tracks. Uh, we're actually down to, uh, one of those tracks, uh, they've agreed to, to sign documents tomorrow. Another track, uh, turned in their signed documents today. And the other two tracks are, are fairly minor temporary easements that essentially are, in this case, they're both driveway. So I think, uh, by being forthright and communicated with the property owners, they see the benefit of what they're receiving. And we're down to a very manageable number. Uh, that being said, I believe we should continue with, uh, the adoption of the resolution. It simply is the first step, uh, in a, in a process that I can go into some more detail on. With the adoption of the resolution, the, uh, the theory behind it is that, that the government says, uh, we are the government and we have need to appropriate private property for a public project. And it's an official published document. It's not, we're not hiding, we're not hiding this. We're not doing it in the back rooms. It's, we're, we need, we need these easements. And in our case, we actually do. Uh, the, uh, resolution identifies the project and, uh, says that the, uh, city's gonna move forward, uh, to do, uh, to do more. So after we've adopted, uh, the, uh, the resolution, uh, we proceed then. The next step is, uh, an ordinance where we have specific legal descriptions. Uh, we've listed properties, the property owners, the addresses, the legal descriptions, all that sort of thing is an ordinance. And then you go to the district court, uh, the attorney, our attorney would file an action in the district court saying the city commission needs these easements. And typically, uh, in Kansas, the judge will appoint a panel of three, uh, appraisers with experience in this sort of thing. And they will, uh, investigate the easements, uh, study the maps. They may ask staff questions of staff, uh, to fully understand the project. And they will make an independent, uh, determination of what they, uh, believe the value is. Then there is a, uh, the appraisers hearing where the, uh, uh, appraisers, uh, are open to discussion with the city. And with the property owners about whether the value, uh, is, is correct, whether there are unresolved or issues or unknown issues that were not reviewed. And at some point, when that hearing is over, the appraisers write a report to the judge. Uh, so now is an important part. Now, the judge has to believe that the intent of the city, uh, is reasonable. We reasonably need these easements. And the judge will then look at the appraisers', uh, report, uh, typically, uh, I'd say not all cases, but they'll average it together. The judge may say, uh, believe that the highest price value is, uh, based on the testimony is the most correct value. But generally, they're averaged and, uh, the judge will issue an order, uh, saying, uh, that if the city, uh, needs these easements, which you said that you do. You need to pay the court this value for this property and that value for that property. At that point, once the city has paid that money to the district court, essentially, the city has access to the property. If an owner believes that their easement is worth more or they, they contest the whole thing for whatever reason, uh, there, there is an appeal process for that. But essentially, you're appealing, uh, you're appealing the amount of the, the valuation of the easement that the city has paid to district court. And not whether or not the city actually needs the easement. So that's, that's the short version of.
So that appeal wouldn't stop the process?
No, that's correct. That's, the law is set up that, uh, the property owners and the, uh, the, the government, the city has had their opportunity in a public forum to discuss this. There's been an independent appraiser, uh, determine the value. And if the, uh, property owner believes that, uh, they're entitled to additional compensation, they can seek that. But, uh, the city, that once the, the money's been deposited with the court, the city can proceed with the project.
Got it.
Uh, we have rarely gone through all of these steps. There have been a few over the years that we have, uh, um, some projects, Shawnee Street project, uh, there was eighty-something easements. And I think, uh, ultimately, we settled on the courthouse steps before we actually, uh, uh, filed the deposit of money with the judge. Uh, large projects, when we did Twentieth Street, uh, there was a large tract of land that the city had made an offer on. The appraisers came back with a substantially less value than what the city previously offered the property owner. Uh, which point, uh, he said, whoa, whoa, uh, let me, he, his attorney contacted our attorney, says, can we like go back to that offer you made? Uh, and the city commission at that point reviewed it and said, uh, yeah, that's, that's appropriate because we've made the offer in good faith. You know, we offered and we settled for the original offer rather than the lower one that the court ordered. So there's all kinds of wrinkles to this, but ultimately, uh, it's, it's a process that's set out in, uh, in state law to protect the property owners from abuse of the government. Uh, the city, it costs the city to participate in this process. So our goal is to continue to negotiate with the property owners, uh, avoid filing fees and going to court and all of this. And the nature of the remaining tracks here that have evolved since this policy report is written, I, I doubt we will follow much more of this process in this resolution.
Mr. McDonald, uh, there's four pieces of property in question right now. Is that what, did I hear you that correctly?
Practically two, but.
And are they temporary easements or are they gonna be permanent?
They're, they're temporary easements in both cases. It's to connect the driveway to the street.
Okay, so with temporary easement, obviously, we'll be on that property doing work. Are you, your staff, everyone else be doing that work, but then when it's finished, they get that property back.
That's correct.
Basically, we're leasing it or, I mean, if it has to, if there's a monetary amount assigned to it, it's basically a short-term rent lease period. We're not taking any property.
That's correct. It's, it's, we're buying.
The only property that we're going to buy, as I remember, is there's a little corner by the service center on Monizuma. Wasn't there a piece of property there that we had already agreed to, that no one lives on, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, there's about six or eight permanent drainage easements and then one.
But those have all been settled.
Utility easement.
Yeah, those have all been settled. So the only ones that are outstanding are temporary easements, which is, we're gonna have equipment in your yard and we're gonna be tearing up your yard. But we will replace it back to its original condition and probably better if we give you a new drive-in.
We have no further right to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's, uh, it's kind of a, a long discussion of what hopefully is, be a fairly short, uh, process. We will be having, uh, a continued discussion with the, the easement, uh, that we do not have. I expect them to be resolved without having to go through too much further of the process that we've identified. Uh, we have a, uh, a pre-construction, uh, property owner meeting. We've actually set a date, I believe.
August twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Uh, we'll be sending that out to the property owners. It'll be like four to six at the service center. They can come, ask questions of us. Contractor will be there, talk about, uh, some of the schedule and types of questions that people ask. Where can I park my car and when can I park it, that sort of thing. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, we've continued to work with the school district. We had a, uh, a fairly, uh, fairly good-sized meeting with the contractor in the school district. Once we get a more detailed schedule from our contractor, we're gonna have another meeting with the school district. We'll involve the police department and all that. They, they rec, the school district is, is aware of the types of annoyance we're gonna be for the next year. Uh, for particularly, uh, Anthony, uh, school, uh, for, and they, they have some good ideas for plans. They're just trying to figure out, uh, depending on when we're going to be doing things, what notification processes they need to use with their parents. And, uh, so we're looking forward to resolving those issues. Uh, people have asked many times, uh, when are they going to start? Uh, we're not entirely sure, but we're sticking with the date that they said that they will be onsite doing something September the ninth. Uh, they may be onsite doing less than something part to that. The utility companies are out there now, uh, working on some of their relocations.
Looking forward to it. I think everyone else in town is too.
Yeah.
I know it's a process. It's a two-year process, but it's, uh, sorely needed and it, it'll look very good two years from now.
And it, it's actually just, it's two seasons, but one year.
Yeah, I mean.
Right.
Be finished, uh, this, this time next year, thirteen months from now, yeah.
Do you have a specific date? I know, I know you say early September in terms of when we hope the construction would start, but.
September ninth.
Oh, okay.
September ninth, yeah.
All right, good.
That's, that's the best information we have.
Okay, that's good.
And they're, they're kinda sticking with it.
I obviously wasn't listening closely, closely enough, so that's good.
Any other questions to comment? If not, our entertaining motion.
I move that, uh, approval of Resolution B twenty-two twenty-eight regarding appro, appropriation of private property for public purposes.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried five zero. Before we adjourn the meeting, are there any comments, starting with Commissioner Batter?
Well, I enjoyed seeing, uh, our mayor's, uh, battle at the Battle of the, the Lip Sync Battle the other night. It was very entertaining and a lot of good public, a lot of good groups, the school districts, and everybody got involved in that. It was a really good community event. I enjoyed it.
The cause? What was the cause?
It was for, um, scholarships that the women's division of the chamber put out.
For our high school students or?
Yes, yes.
And how much did they raise? About seven grand?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
That's.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
It was good, yes.
Commissioner Dedeky, Commissioner Priceinger.
Uh, yeah, I think all of us are recently saddened by the news of Cushing St. Luke's, uh, closing down the OB in Leavenworth. Uh, I don't know exactly if that was immediately or is it the end of the month or is it, it's closed now.
Immediately.
And that's a business decision that Cushing St. Luke's has to make. And I know it's very tough. Some of us have served on the boards of the hospitals here and they started and stopped OB operations from time to time. And it's always been very difficult to get an OB doctor and you really need a group of doctors, two or three, to work. You couldn't saddle one OB doctor for a whole town because the poor man or woman would never sleep. Uh, and, you know, the reality of it is, the big birthing centers and the bigger hospitals are, are getting some of the business. But it, it is sad that Leavenworth will not have, there will no longer be children being born in Leavenworth on their birth certificate. And, you know, just two miles north of here, we've got a major baby-making machine and, uh, and they'll all be going out of town to have their children.
I think it's terrible and, uh.
But it's nothing, it's.
But it's nothing that the city has anything to do with.
That's right.
And we have no control over what St. Luke's wants to do in our community.
A private business decision of Cushing and St. Luke's and.
So I just want to let the public know that.
Yeah.
Know that, you know, whatever, whatever our thoughts are, we have no control over it here.
That's true. Thank you.
Mr. Paul? I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. McDonald to just briefly, um, because I know the, uh, the Ford has brought this up to me and I hear a lot about it. Talk about real quick, the bridge and, uh, we've been working with KDOT. Mike's been out there counting cars and lights.
They have counters for things like that.
Well, nice of you to say it. We've had the KDOT District Engineer Year up here. We've had the KDOT Traffic Safety. So just briefly, what have we done over the last couple of days to make that experience better?
Okay, the, uh, traffic, there's two traffic signals that control the traffic that goes across the bridge. Uh, KDOT has their, uh, self-contained traffic signal on the bridge. Uh, they've, uh, made it as short as possible to, so they can do their work. And then the city has the traffic signal at Fourth and, uh, Fourth and Metropolitan. Uh, the short version, uh, really is the two signals, uh, are not designed in any way that they can communicate with each other. Uh, we met, uh, with KDOT and we went onsite and watched, uh, traffic last week and this week. And we've made some changes. Uh, they found some things in their signal that caused it to do odd things when it shouldn't. They fixed that. Uh, we've changed the timing on our signal at, uh, Fourth and Metropolitan considerably, starting yesterday. And, uh, I was up there yesterday, uh, four to five and today from four to five. I believe, uh, it ain't pretty, but it's about as good as it's gonna get and it's way more better than it was last week.
That's good.
Good.
How long is it gonna be tied up? Uh, they said another about six weeks.
Since you have the floor, why don't you, a quick update on Twentieth and Tenth Avenue, Twentieth Street and Tenth Avenue?
Quick update, they've started milling on Twentieth Street. They've probably got another two days, maybe three. Uh, we trying to get some information from the, uh, contract, same contractor that'll be on Tenth Avenue. Uh, when they will start working Tenth Avenue. We don't have any information yet. We hope, uh, well, we told them they cannot start on Tenth Avenue the first day of school. We hope they start sooner than that, but they can't start on the first day of school. Pavement on Twentieth Street, uh, they're, what, this weekend?
Right now, scheduled to, to lay asphalt Saturday and Sunday.
That's the question I had, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they'll be followed up with some striping and some other odds and ends of things that they need to do. Uh, we're still waiting to get the asphalt approval on Tenth Avenue. But if they're able to do the milling, uh, we've, uh, told them that is perfectly fine. Let's kind of expedite this any way we can when we have opportunity to do so.
And some of the work on Twentieth, um, is concrete patching of, of blown-out joints. So that's sort of the pre-work to then come back with the overlay. So the concrete patching isn't, you know, um, a method that's gonna be ripped up. That's, that's getting rid of the joint damage, putting concrete in there and then the, the asphalt goes over the top of it. So that's all part of the same process. It's not too separate. We're not filling potholes and then overlaying it.
Correct.
We're repairing joints and then, and then going over the top of the street.
A lot of misinformation out there.
Yeah, it's all part of the, the repair to the street.
And the engineers that work on it know what they're doing.
Good exercise, sir.
You're good, yeah.
Yeah. You good?
I'm good, sir.
All right. Just very briefly, some comments relating to the promotion of our city and I'll try to make them, I will make them brief. But on those citizens that may not think we don't, don't have cultural and fun activities available within our city. Mamma Mia's been playing down, at the downtown, uh, theater that the city owns and maintains. And that the River City Community Players are the, is the organization that uses it for these great plays. And this Mamma Mia, it was sold out. Um, I was lucky to get in, uh, get, got one, one empty seat. Because I went and purchased my ticket at the, at the window, but it really was a great, I was blown away by the, by the talent, sold-out show. Amazing talent, choreography, beautiful costumes and excellent lighting and sound, which to a certain extent, a large extent, I think, is the result of the city's efforts. And working with the River City, uh, Community Players and, uh, just first class and a lot of fun. And there seemed to be a lot of young people there in addition to old fogies like me. But, um, um, so that's a good thing. And I just say that it was cultural and it was a lot of fun and they have their final, um, weekend, this coming weekend. And then the other thing was, um, just, uh, there were, on Facebook this weekend, there was the, I think it was Friday, they may have finished Thursday or Friday. The new sign for Denny's Produce, which I think is a beautiful sign for that particular business. And it was erected late last week by our hometown sign company, Young Sign Company. And I think it'll be good for their business and, but I, but I also think it really adds to the appearance and the image of the city on the main thoroughfare coming into the city. So I point those two things out and, um, that's what I wanted to share.
And they are taking debit cards as well, too. And they are taking debit cards as well, too.